Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Lundary Town Council meeting for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilor Dolan, Councilor Paul and I attended the nine eleven ceremony last Friday. And both Chief O'Brien and Chief Hart got up and they said some pretty significant things. One is, is that Chief O'Brien talked about how you mentioned it to your grandchildren, what's September eleventh? And, you know, there's always been the saying of never forget. And I went home in my office and I saw this there. And my family is third generation New York City police officers. And my cousin, Chris Gallagher, sent this to me. He was on Truck Two EMS in Queens and he responded that day. He survived his, sadly, his partner did not. But this was the placard they had sent out and talking about fallen heroes. And then Chief Hart got up and he talked about, you know, you are the folks who run towards what's happening when others are going in the other direction. And especially today, you know, and what happened in Los Angeles to those poor police officers over the weekend. We always talk about moment of silence for our first responders here in town. So after we have the Pledge of Allegiance and we have that moment of silence, think about that a little bit. That'd be appreciated. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the first responders here in town in Lundary who go above and beyond the call of duty every day. Our public works people are among those first responders plowing the roads, making sure everything is safe on our roads. Let's have a moment of silence for them for their safety in this community. Thank you. All right. I think I have a couple, Mr. Town Manager, I've got a couple of items under public comment here. I have a couple of staff members. I know the fire chief wanted to speak.
Darren?
I come to you tonight standing here for a elderly resident that couldn't make it tonight, just expressing her concerns over the water restriction ordinance. She wanted me to get up here and ask you folks to reconsider on that ordinance. I just saw today that obviously Lundary is in one of the areas in the state of New Hampshire that's in that severe drought. We're approximately nine inches below our normal level and they're predicting over the next seven days to get less than a tenth of an inch of rain. So in saying that, I told this resident that I would stand up in front of you to express, you know, my concerns in reference to the water conservation, what we're finding in some of our locations throughout town that we normally would do drafting exercises if we would have a structure fire in a non-hydrant district that are getting pretty low, a little muddy, a little mucky. So I think it would be difficult to use our apparatus to do such things as that, so we'd have to rely on some type of tanker shuttle. So again, I'm just standing up here because I told her that I would do this and express my concern over the water conservation as well, knowing the situation that we're in. So that being first and foremost. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention to the council is that the fire department is currently in conversations with two additional communities for dispatching services. I will update you more as time goes on. Right now, we're just kind of in the courting stage and kind of laying out logistics. And if that progresses any further, I'll be sure to let you know. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Darren.
Do I have anyone else for public comment this evening?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, if I could at-
That's all right. I'll have this gentleman come on up. He's about to stand up.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Sir, just have your name and address for our records, please. If you want, you're six feet away. If you want to take your mask off, that's more comfortable for you speaking, feel free.
Sure. Randy Fesch, Nine Derry Way. I had a couple of quick topics I want to address. The first one echoing the chief is on the water ordinance. Canceling, I'm necessarily in favor of, and I have a few things that I was concerned on in reading it with, you know, what we're trying to do here. I certainly understand the sentiment and the concern, but in looking at the ordinance, you know, with the certain exclusions, which, you know, I wasn't sure, it's not exactly clear how they're going to be applied, what they're going to apply to. It mentions golf courses and I'm like, certainly I like to play golf, but not sure why we're going to make an exclusion for them if everybody else needs to, you know, not have things with their lawns. Little concern on how much we're going to spend on resources, police kind of really enforcing this, whether it's really worth it, their time and effort. And then, you know, the level one, level two, we're talking even odd days, Monday, Tuesday. I don't see necessarily that really being that effective because, you know, if you're going to water your lawn on the even days, well, now I'll just put my sprinkler system on thirty minutes instead of twenty minutes. I'm still using more water, trying to keep my lawn green. There's going to be all kinds of ways people are going to look to go beyond this unless you get straight to level three. So again, I understand the concern, not sure this is really going to be that impactful. And I also, in looking at it, didn't see a lot of discussion or numbers really around how much of the water we think is really being used by where we're focusing just on sprinkler systems and why we're not, you know, being concerned with, you know, other potential uses of water, whether it's drawing or swimming pools or, you know, it's hard to really get down to limiting again in monitoring this, but, you know, showers, you know, dishes, clothes, you know, there's all different ways that you can waste water if you're not being careful. So understand the sentiment, just don't think it's really practical and going to be that effective as an ordinance. Trying to move things along. The second item I wanted to address is really came to light recently and with my children, I had some older children that went through the programs, coming back through with my younger kids, is really the recreation program. Certainly think we have some good programs in town with baseball, soccer, basketball things. What I wasn't enthused about as I looked at it, coming back into it, is some of the costs for some of these programs, especially on the recreation side, for the fees that the kids need for these, playing these sports. And I know we've kind of went to this outsourcing model in Lundary where we have different groups managing it, whether it's baseball or soccer, which, you know, I think there's some advantages there. But when I look at how much the town is spending on the rec program and we start looking at some of these, you know, what I'll consider a boondoggle of putting in a public swimming pool or a theater, and I look at, we're spending in the last budget, one hundred and fifty-four thousand out of over thirty-seven million, which is point four percent, going to our rec program. And I look back at, you know, twenty-ten, it wasn't huge either, it was a hundred and forty-four K out of thirty-point-eight million, but just from twenty-ten to then, you're talking about a twelve percent reduction in the rec program. So we seem to be going the wrong way and fees seem to be increasing on these kids as things get more expensive. You try and, you know, whether it's uniforms, facilities, I think I understand the soccer program has to pay for lights, which I know there are costs, but if you do basketball for rec basketball, I don't think we're charging the rec program for lights and the heating and everything else with the schools. So seems a little off. I haven't finished my research, but I encourage you guys to do some. I did look at things like Dairy, which has a budget of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is three, in terms of percentage, they're like one point three percent of their budget, so three times what Lundary's spending from a school age population. You know, I think you're talking about forty-eight hundred to forty-two hundred. That's on the school age side and I'm certainly a proponent of the rec program doing adult services too, and I know we have some in town, basketball and stuff. But I would like to see, you know, I'm also a proponent of keeping our tax rate low and you've probably heard me talk about that in the past, but as far as where we are going to spend our money and have a benefit, I think things like, looking at things like this of where, you know, whether we're going to, you know, help with some of the fees in these programs or in terms of registration fees or help them with some expenses that they have or insurance or something that we can look at this and potentially try and contribute some more money overall to our rec program to help out the children and those adult programs that need it, I think would be worthwhile. And the last thing I'll leave you with is just, I had a quick question on the CARES Act money. I saw there was an item, I think for twenty-five thousand more, we had already approved fifty-thousand out of six hundred and thirteen thousand, I understand we got from the state. And I couldn't find a breakdown of where the other five hundred thousand plus exactly had gone. I know there was another grant the firefighters got for three sixty-eight, but beyond the CR car that I saw on the agenda, I wasn't sure where the rest of the money had gone. So I didn't know if somebody could either give a quick rundown or point me to where I can find the information in the interest of saving time.
So we're addressing some of the CARE stuff tonight, on an agenda item tonight. I appreciate your comments. I understand what you're saying about the rec program. We'll look a little bit further into it. I mean, and stating the obvious, we watch revenues almost every day and we'll see what we can do. I mean, this year is going to be, I guess the best word to use will be an interesting budget cycle. Because we just, there's a lot we don't know yet. But I appreciate your comments and I think with people staying at home and everything, I think it highlights the rec program. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, too, maybe at some point I can have Art and maybe some of the heads of the rec organizations come in and talk about where these fees are going toward, because I know you're not alone in parents looking at the fees they're paying for rec programs. We're not talking even travel, but just rec programs.
Travel's a whole nother ballgame.
And the costs seem to be going up quite a bit, just for kids to get involved in recreation activities, so.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly not a proponent so much on the travel side, but in some cases I have a suspicion there might be some kind of cost deferment from the rec to help the travel programs and some of these things a little bit. Certainly no evidence, but I have a concern there. But yeah, the fees are going up and I think it's something we should look at with such a small amount. I feel like there's, you know, even a small increase, you know, of the overall budget is not going to really hurt the town that much in a need of, but could be a big benefit to the kids.
Well, we have to make sure that that revenue goes to the fees because these are organizations that are funding themselves. It's not part of the town. So, you know, you've got to make sure that if we do do that, that's going to be to reduce the fees that they charge. So that's another piece.
Yeah, so let's take a look at it. You know, if it is going to the travel program, I would like to know about that because travel is, in some cases, thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I would challenge these organizations too, if we are contributing, whether it's money or facilities, and I looked at the rec baseball program and it goes like April to June. So we have baseball fields in town that I know there's all certain all-star tournaments for Little League and stuff that go later in the season, but I'm not sure why our rec program couldn't continue through the summer and that we need to end in June when the baseball field is sitting there. You know, the, some of the other programs, I think, you know, also like rec basketball, you know, to me, it's involving learning the sport, learning to appreciate it, learn to love it, learning the skills. You know, the rec program has one practice a week for most of the rec leagues on the younger level and it's usually a Sunday. So they have a game on Saturday and a practice on Sunday, don't touch, you know, maybe a basketball week if they don't have one in their yard and they come back the next week. So I was looking at the schedules from the past winter and all the evening schools where they are used are all used for the travel program and the basketball program, nothing for the rec league. So some nights the gyms are sitting empty, it seems, where I feel like, you know, even if you can't get every team in there, say, okay, the, you know, five and six-year-old division, have an open practice for all the teams come and have some people, you know, a couple of coaches there. You don't need all the coaches, but have a couple come and teach some skills, things like that. I mean, there's creative ways to get some more involvement, make better use of our facilities to help, you know, kids learn more about the sport that they're trying to learn and maybe they're going to travel, maybe they won't, but I feel like we can help their skill and love of the games.
Well, thank you. Makes maximum points. It's appreciated. Sure.
I think you've just applied for the rec commission. Kirby's in the back if you want to put in an application. I've known you, I've coached some of your kids before, so it's a good time, good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Anyone else for public comment?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask John Trotter, who's the Assistant Director of Public Works, to come up. I just wanted him to give an update on the dump day, the free dump day that we had talked about previously. So the first big hurdle was finding out whether or not if we could use the CARES Act money for something like that. And the answer we got was yes. And so then the next piece of it was figuring out the logistics. And I know John and Janosch and Bob Carey had meant to have conversations about it and I believe Janosch spoke to Councilor Paul previously as well, but I just wanted John to give an update as far as what they've, the conclusion they've come to in determining whether or not this could actually logistically work out, John, if you wouldn't mind.
So presently, we've been accommodating about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety customers that come in that actually are paying for disposal of construction debris and whatnot. But in addition to the ones that do not pay, there are people that come in with yard waste and recyclables and then the large rigid play yard stuff, the little tight things.
Mr. Chairman, when you say a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety, you mean per week?
Every Saturday, per Saturday, yeah. That's about the average. So our biggest concern, Tom-
That excludes everybody else who we don't count because they bring in cardboard, metal-
Non-paying.
Non-paying. So let's say that's another ten percent, just for argument's sake.
Correct.
So we're looking at two hundred to two hundred and fifty people a weekend?
Yes.
Okay.
So our biggest concern is, again, is the throughput in the capacity. So again, with those hundred and eighty people, a hundred and ninety people, each of those containers have been full every week, every Saturday. So if we end up having a free day, we can just imagine what the numbers would be. And then again, as far as throughput, and when I say throughput, meaning how many people can you process through that with COVID and everything? Again, it's, you know, it's going to be some, there's going to be some semblance of order in there. So those are basically our two biggest concerns is, again, you know, we're not going to have the capacity. So at one o'clock when we're full and we tell people, sorry, you've been waiting in line for an hour and a half, two hours, what are they going to do?
All right, so I went down there a couple of weeks ago to drop some stuff off and I talked to Paul, our foreman down there, and I asked him, how big is this facility? And he says it's a little bit over a football field, a little bit over the size of a football field. And then I think we have ten receptacles, seven of them take household, three take something else.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I asked him about it. I said, well, what do you think? And he said, he says, well, it's ten thirty and I'm half-full. So it's an interesting idea. I just don't, I mean, I know Dairy's a transfer station, they could probably handle it.
Correct.
But we don't, we can't handle, what you're saying is you can't handle that type of capacity because we're not a transfer station.
That is part of the issue. And also, we just don't have the real estate down there to-
To move things around.
To move things around, correct. At least Dairy, again, they have their own, those open tops are theirs. They have the ability to move them around, shuffle them, get them out of the way and they actually have the real estate to store them as well.
Well, all of this, I mean, I think it's sad that, you know, we can't give back to the taxpayers who are hurting, who, you know, have stuff they'd like to give away. But I think it concerns me that if our population is where it is now with the anticipated growth, considering there's still more people coming, if this is where we're at at a daily, every Saturday now, what are we doing to look forward to saying, okay, we're going to get two hundred to three hundred people there on a Saturday? What is the plan and is someone working on it, thinking about it? Because that's a very realistic thing of what I'm saying. If we, it's better to have a futuristic plan and a good plan in place, you know, you hope you never have to use it, but if we do, at least we have one and we're not rushing to put it in place. So I guess that's what brought, you know, when I was talking to Janosch, it brought it to my attention that, you know, we're going to have an issue in the very near future with the capacity of our dump. And I really think it is sad that we can't, you know, do something nice for the taxpayers. But I felt it was a good idea since we got some funds. I'm not sure about any other logistics, maybe somebody here could figure out something, but anyway.
I think it was a good idea too, and the funds will still, and I'll get into this when we talk about the CARES Act, the funds will still go to the taxpayers in a different way. But I think when I talked to John and Janosch about it more, because I said, well, what if we did multiple days? What if we did over multiple days? What if we just said in the morning time, you know, it'll be free? And like what Janosch said to me, which I wasn't thinking, but he said, well, you could say that. He goes, but if we're full at eleven o'clock and you've had a line and someone's been sitting there for forty-five minutes and you go, mm, sorry, you missed it, you know, then we're going to have everyone else who's in line kind of upset at the fact that, you know, they were waiting there for so long and now they can't, thinking they could drop this stuff off and now they can't.
Yeah, people do get pretty upset. I know I've worked the household hazardous waste collection days ever since I've worked here in town and there's been a number of times and we have to shut it down because we're at capacity with our consultant and people are not happy.
Well, I guess the good news is, is I went there on Saturday with a back of the truck full and they charged me seven dollars. So I guess it's a, you know, at least it's a reasonable fee.
Yeah.
And they're all, they're all very easy to deal with down there and that is, we've upgraded that facility seven, eight years ago?
Yeah, about that.
And I think there is a plan for future expansion, if I remember from the CIP, beyond this one.
I would have to look into it, John, but again, the only other part of that though is, again, if we increase the capacity that we have in there, then we're going to fall under a different permit with the-
And then we become a transfer station.
Exactly, correct.
So since we have waste management, we don't really need that. Okay, I understand. Go ahead, Joe.
So logistically, if you, keep it on the premise of what we're trying to accomplish, trying to give like a free day, what if you did it a little bit differently, like logistically, like even if you did it like, I don't know, silly thing like by last name, group a few last names or group a few sections of town on one weekend, you know, and just kind of put it out on a schedule? I think to your point, Kevin, is that maybe if you broke it up and did it over the course of four weeks and kind of, you know, had sectors in the town that would report, instead of just saying everybody's open for free, letters A through F can come this week, you know what I mean? I don't know, just something like that, kind of break it up. Something to think about.
The other thing that maybe we can think about is what we used to do with Beautify Lundary. Years ago, when we first did it, we would pull things out of the power lines and out of wooded areas and we, a certain section of town, and the town would drive by, pick them all up and then get rid of it, maybe by, like you're saying, Joe, breaking it into sections, right? But maybe we don't even do that. We have our town just say, look, you put your stuff out this day on these street, on this street and we pick it up. I don't know, I just, I feel like, you know, we should try to do something for the people of this town. We do ask a lot of them and they always step up to the plate, whether it's for a new police station, new fire station, new fields, they're always there and it's just something nice and that they can actually physically see. I know you're talking about giving them breaks, but that's kind of like up here, this is like something tangible, so.
Okay.
Oh, and could you send me, you said you think that we've already done that, if you find it? Could you email it to me? Just, I'd like to look at it. Thank you.
As far as planning for the future?
Yeah.
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 Because again, the intent was, again, to make it a convenient location for people to get rid of things so that we don't find it on West Road and South Road.
But we do.
Yeah, you know, Page Road.
Right, but we still do. And I guess if you could send me information, it like, is it the stuff you take in at one spot that changes it from a dump? So if we had two different spots, would we still be able to have two dumps and not a transfer station?
So what kicks us into-
Yeah, like what are the-
The parameters.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Anything further for public comment? Seeing none, I'll move to new business. Order two oh two zero one three, an order relative to the withdrawal of cable equipment from the Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Campo.
As you guys can see on the second page, this is the school district's annual request for a withdrawal from the Capital Reserve Fund for the cable department. It is part of the thirty-two thousand five hundred Comcast franchise fee agreement that we've entered into with the school district to give them up to eight thousand dollars a year for purposes of maintaining their cable connection.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. I was speaking recently with someone from Consolidated, I think it was called.
Consolidated Communications.
And they're like eighty-five percent within the town and I guess there's one section that they are having issues with and they, something about we're asking them to bury the lines and they don't want to bury the lines and, because it costs too much money. But I also know that they do supply the school as backup. And do we go out to bid and say, you know, let's see what these people are going to offer us compared to Comcast? I mean, we should, even if we're going to stay with Comcast, we should competitively get bids for them and to find out who's going to give us the best deal. I mean, we all do it at home, right? We have Comcast and, you know, you're moving over to the next program and you say, I'm going to leave Comcast, tell me what you can do for me. I mean, is that what we do or do we just say, okay, thank you, we'll take another five years? I mean-
So that's a different question than what we're doing here.
Yeah, but I just, I kind of wanted to understand it, why we were doing this.
Okay, so the way this works is, is that-
I have to wait.
We signed a year or two ago, we signed a new agreement with Comcast.
Franchise agreement.
Franchise agreement with Comcast. There's a franchise fee that comes on your bill.
Right.
So we, that money comes and rotates back into us and that's what we use to operate the cable center and to fund these kinds of projects.
Okay.
So this is actually being funded out of the Comcast bill that people are paying now.
So this is actually in addition to that money? They gave us another thirty-two thousand.
And then we have a deal with the schools that we, there's, I forget what the percentage is that we use and we split with the schools-
It's eight thousand dollars out of the thirty-two.
To support their program as well.
Yes.
Right.
How long's that contract, John, do you know?
Pardon me?
How long was our agreement for?
It's ten years.
Ten years? Wow.
Twelve years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years?
Yeah, it's twelve years because we negotiated it two years before the end of the term on the last one.
Wow, okay.
And I think we had a number of asks in that contract and they gave them all to us. It was upgrades to facilities, upgrades to lines, upgrades to internet, internet provided in public spaces. Am I missing anything? There was a whole laundry list of things that we asked for.
And the rates stayed the same in those ten years or did they go up?
We, that does not regulate the rates. They're a privately held organization. That's free market.
So we got this one-time thing for twelve years of them having our customers, correct?
So what do you mean by one-time thing? This thirty-two thousand is an annual as well as the, I believe it's roughly about five hundred thousand they pay us in franchise fees every year?
Okay. And they're paying us that is the fee they charge, so it's technically the taxpayers that are paying that through Comcast?
Well, the taxpayers pay for everything.
Well, I know, I just want to understand-
Well, it's the subscriber, because if you choose not to have Comcast, you're not paying into it.
The people of Lundary who don't have a choice.
But you don't have, but when it comes to cable, it's not like there's a real competitive market out there right now because Verizon FiOS is not offered in this area as of this time and it wasn't offered in this area as the time that we entered into the franchise agreement. There's obviously satellite, but that's a whole different, different ballgame there. And so it's not like, and when you talk about Consolidated, there's Comcast which provides the cable, but Consolidated owns the poles, the utility poles. And so they're a whole different company than Comcast is, but Consolidated doesn't do cable. They don't provide cable.
Right, they supply internet.
So if you rent-
Right.
Well, they do have an internet service that they provide through to their customers. But if you rent an apartment in Woodmont and you sign up for Comcast cable, you pay a franchise fee.
And part of that fees comes to the town.
Correct, yeah.
And what we don't spend on it offsets the tax rate.
Okay. I'm just curious. I just, I guess I was shocked at the twelve years, that's an awful long time.
Well, I guess the thing to understand about this is that part of that is that they reworked the entire infrastructure in town. So they bring in fiber optics, they maintain all the lines, it's all part of the investment.
They did, right. If you look at other municipalities, not just in New Hampshire, but in New England, you'll, most cable franchise agreements are upwards of ten years, maybe longer than that, because you'll, most cable franchise agreements are upwards of ten years, maybe longer than that, because as John said, they do, they're doing major infrastructure investments. So one of the things that they did for the town when we entered into this agreement is they upgraded a lot of our cable to the schools in this building to fiber. Uh, and so there was a, there were a lot of fiber upgrades. They made a big investment in fiber in the center of town here.
So will they continue to do upgrades or it's just that one time?
No, they continue to do it.
So it's a continual thing?
One of the things that we asked for in this, it's not in the agreement, but where we've been in talks with them is that we would ultimately like an HD cable channel, local access channel. So right now, when people turn us on, they're, you go on to channel twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to find your local cable access. Well, we want a, a seven oh something, uh, to, to have high def. Uh, and I don't believe any municipalities in New Hampshire have high def yet for uh, local cable, but we've told them that when they roll it out, we want to be one of the first ones that, that gets one.
Oh, okay.
I remember the public wifi too, that you guys mentioned earlier.
Right, it's public wifi at the, um, at the Common and et cetera, yes, Tom.
And I think it's, um, reasonable to expect that in a negotiation like this, that without a significant period of time, commitment from the town, we won't see the, the level of investment that we're looking for from the, from the company. There's, there's a trade, it's part of the negotiation. We, we are gonna invest in you as a community and then they're gonna invest in us uh, with, you know, with their capital expenses. So with a very short-term agreement or shorter-term agreement, we would, should expect that the investment would be much less from the, from the cable provider.
Okay, I'm sorry to taking up your time.
No, that's quite all right. I mean, so when we do get a, 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 a customer who's unhappy and they find their way to the council, through Drew, we have a number of somebody that we contact that bypasses everybody else and Drew will correct me if I'm wrong here, but generally inside of that same day, they'll get service.
Oh, that's good, alright.
So, there's a lot of advantages to the relationship from that standpoint. Um, okay, so questions regarding this equipment? Um, are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve, um, order two oh, two oh, dash, one three. All those in favor, sing by by saying aye. Chair votes affirmative and we are approved. Um, resolution two oh, two oh, dash, one four, thank you, Justin. An amendment to the CR, uh, the CRCAR presented by Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Justin, if you would, why don't you come back up just for a few minutes?
Wait till you get to the door.
I was gonna tell you to stay up there. Uh, so what you have here is I'm looking to have an amendment to the initial uh, program that we rolled out using some of the CARES Act money. If, uh, just to refresh your memories, we had allocated about fifty thousand dollars, um, to give back in reimbursement money to small businesses in town that, uh, had COVID-related expenses. Uh, we went through the first round and we were able to allocate approximately, uh, almost twenty-five thousand of the fifty. Um, and that wa- that, that were all of the businesses who provided us with the level of detail we needed, which was primarily receipts of what it was that they had ordered. Um, we did have maybe a half dozen or so other businesses who, um, asked for the money but did not provide and still have not provided us any detailed, uh, receipts. Uh, so what this amendment seeks to do is to up it from, they could get reimbursed up to a thousand dollars. We'd like to up it to twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, because there were a number of businesses who provided in excess of a thousand dollars of receipts, but we couldn't award them that, uh, because it only went up to a thousand. And would also like to just open it up one more time to businesses who maybe missed out the first time, uh, who can get another bite at the apple here to get reimbursed for their COVID-related expenses. And so what this amendment seeks to do is, uh, up the maximum amount to twenty-five hundred dollars from a thousand and it also ups the total allocation from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. Though I have to be honest, based on what we saw the first round, I don't think we'll meet the seventy-five. It's just more of a, um, I, I'd rather be more cautious than not on making sure we have enough money to give to these small businesses. Now, um, just to give you kind of a thirty thousand picture, thirty thousand foot picture of where we are with our CARES Act money. So, uh, we were given, uh, up to six hundred and how much, Justin?
Six hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Alright, so just about six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in CARES Act funds. Um, up until this point, including, uh, the, um, the money for the small businesses, uh, how much, Justin, have we appropriated at this point?
With it being at fifty thousand, it would be about one ninety.
Hundred and ninety thousand. So that includes, so that's the fifty thousand for the small businesses and then those are, also includes, uh, reimbursements the town has submitted for in the way of, um, PPE. Uh, Justin, why don't you give some of the items that we've sought reimbursement for?
So it's for our, uh, telwork costs for being able to work remote and function remote, doing the Zoom meetings, things of that nature. So people had the laptops and were able to continue functioning town hall while it was at the height of the pandemic. Um, the legal fees associated with all the RSAs and opinions and everything else that came out during that time. The municipal building modifications, so when you go into one of the departments and you see the Plexiglas, uh, shield, the wood that goes with it, any cleaning, disinfecting, protective equipment that went along. Um, the increase in election costs back in March with all the additional, uh, sanitizer and everything that we had to do for that. Um, the elderly population, in order to check up on them, we sent out more mailings than we normally would to continue contact with them since the senior center was shut down. Any, uh, if you remember, there was a Families First Coronavirus Response Act for non-responders. So anyone that ended up taking a portion of that or taking a part of that, we were able to get reimbursed for. The hazard pay that was offered by the governor, if somebody worked overtime from the public safety side, there's a portion of their rate that gets increased because of that hazard pay. We were able to get reimbursed for that portion, so it didn't fall on the taxpayers. Any overtime or quarantine for the police or fire was also reimbursed at twenty-five percent. Uh, we also have, that's a pretty rough view of all of them as I'm looking now.
So, we, we've had one submittal for reimbursements already to the state. Um, after the municipalities all submitted in that first round, what the state saw was that, um, the requests for reimbursements were far less than the actual monies that were being allocated to each municipality. So what the state said is, they came back and said to us that whatever monies you have essentially left over, um, you can apply that to your first responders payroll, uh, for say the months of April, May and June, uh, you know, during that time, to essentially hit your, your cap, right? And so that's what we intend to do, uh, with the balance of the money. Um, when we receive those funds, uh, it'll likely come to us in the way of, uh, a revenue for this fiscal year. And so what that means is that revenue will, uh, both help, help offset any shortfall in revenue that we're experiencing for this fiscal year and it will also go toward lowering the tax rate when we go to set the tax rate, uh, this October. So kind of going back to what you were saying, Deb, if we were gonna, and I'm just using a round number here, if we were gonna spend ten thousand dollars, let's say on the free dump day, while we may not do that, that ten thousand will instead go toward helping offset the tax rate uh, this, this coming October. Uh, so that's really how the money i- is being planned to be, uh, spent, uh, and then returned, uh, to the town.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, can we ask them now?
Of course.
Okay, um, Kevin, did you think about adding, uh, nonprofits and churches um, to your relief program if they've submitted, you know, that they had to get different things? Um, if they've submitted you, um, receipts, did you think about maybe including them as your, in your small businesses? Cause technically.
I don't think they're excluded, Deb, and I would actually ask Lisa, our, our legalese over there, um, whether or not she, cause I know her and Malaguti worked on the instructions and definitions for this, but Lisa, would, would you say that nonprofits and churches would be excluded from, from applying for this?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we do define eligible applicants as businesses located in Londonderry with fifty or fewer employees. Um, but I don't recall getting any applications actually from any nonprofits.
No, we didn't.
Probably because we didn't put it in, yeah.
I would say this, and, and we'll get a legal opinion on it, but I would say, in my opinion, Deb, I don't believe they're excluded.
But I mean, if they don't see it in there, they might think that it's just for businesses.
They could apply for the state funds when the state had their main street monies. I know nonprofits.
It was two separate.
Excuse me, um, are you sending out the substitute W nine with this?
Yes.
Alright, says right on it, nonprofit organization. Is it, it says right on it, business designation, you may elect to select more than one.
Right.
So it says on here, nonprofit organization.
Yeah, that would include faith-based institutions as well.
Okay, um, the other thing is, um, Justin, when you were saying, um, that all that money for the sanitizer and stuff was only a hundred and what, did that include, um, fire, police, um, or was it just for the town hall?
So what I let, read off there is just the municipal relief funds.
Oh, okay.
Been working closely with the fire department and police department on the, uh, court, the, I call it the CESF, the one that we accepted the last time.
Okay.
As well as a couple other grants that we've been working on.
Okay.
One of them being the AFG supplemental, which we're still waiting to hear from, that if we don't get, we'll reopen up.
That's the one we talked about, right, yeah.
We'll reopen up in October and we'll reput in for it. So it's, it, it doesn't include it in this, but we did go for it where we could and we still will be going for FEMA for seventy-five percent of.
Okay, and then you said something about twenty-five percent? I didn't understand what you meant by that.
So the municipal relief funds for certain categories will only reimburse twenty-five percent of the expense because FEMA reimburses seventy-five percent.
Okay, okay, and, and Kevin, you're right, everything, it would be great if the, the rate went down, but let's just hope the assessments don't go up and wash it out.
Well, the assessments aren't gonna go up this year.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Cause if the assessments went up, the rate would go down even further. Alright. Uh, anything else? Nothing?
No.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to approve order two zero, two zero, dash, one four. All those in favor, sing by by saying aye.
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 Chair votes affirmative, report is approved. Next matter on the agenda, general mask ordinance discussion. Alright, just so that there's no misunderstanding about what we're doing here, let me frame this conversation. We had a brief consensus conversation several weeks ago with regards of whether or not we should have a discussion about whether we are going, we should, we need an ordinance or not. There's no mandated ordinance coming out from the town tonight. There's no ordinance proposed tonight. This is a discussion. So in framing this discussion, let's keep in mind that churches, places of worship are already requiring masks. Municipal facilities, the schools are already requiring masks. Retail's facilities, which are privately held businesses and are already requiring masks. So what we're talking about here is, and to keep in mind for this discussion, is there's two things. One is, in your packet is a example of all the other municipalities who've adopted this type of ordinance. But in discussions with the police chief and the fire chief, I'll give you a scenario that, you know, would frame this discussion. Let's say, for example, Londonderry plays Pinkerton in football and two weeks later, we have an outbreak of five hundred cases. We want to be able to give the fire chief a mechanism to enforce an ordinance that we would craft with him and the police chief and that would be for public health and public safety. We're not looking to do an ordinance, at least in my mind, we're not looking to do an ordinance that's mandating for people to wear them in public. So for this discussion, that's sort of the framework of it. So if we wanna look at, cause it takes us four to six weeks to put an ordinance in place, the question is, do we wanna look at putting something in place, working with the emergency management people, that in the event of an outbreak coming into the winter, we give them the tools prepared to do something. And the answer can be no to that too, but at least we're having the discussion. So, open the floor for your feedback.
Yeah, I think it's our responsibility. We have to be prepared. I think, um, you know, uh, Deb said a few minutes ago, you know, when we rush to do something, we, we, we mess it up. So it's, it's, this is human, human, human beings do that. So at least we're prepared and we can pull the trigger when we need to pull the trigger.
Alright, so, and so what you're saying is, is that you would support something that would give the fire chief the ability to be able to implement something in the event of a breakout?
Yeah, we can work on it now, not implement it immediately, but at least give them the tools necessary, absolutely.
Move too fast, it's always a mistake.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
If we were to, to craft an ordinance such as, uh, it's been identified, uh, there are some things that, that we should, we should consider, right, about who should not wear a mask. Who should, who should not be required to wear a mask and I, my understanding is the CDC says children under, under two years old shouldn't be required to wear a mask. Anyone who has trouble breathing or an illness, uh, that is breathing related, anyone who was maybe unconscious, incapacitated or unable to remove a mask without assistance from another person. People who are deaf or hard of hearing, uh, because a lot of those folks, um, communicate through lip reading.
Mm-hmm.
People who have, uh, intellectual or developmental disabilities, mental health conditions or other sens- sensory sensitivities. Um, people who are engaged in high intensity activities like running, if you're, if you're a jogger and you're wearing a mask, you, you may not be able to, to, uh, complete that type of exercise. It seems, it seems like common sense, but people who are swimmers at the club or whatever, obviously shouldn't be asked to wear a mask. And, uh, and our first responders, uh, also know that, uh, sometimes if you're outdoor, if you have, if you have an outdoor job and we had the heat like we had just a few weeks ago, uh, you're much more susceptible to get a heat-related injury if you're, if you're masked up and not getting full ventilation. So, so why am I bringing this up? If we were to craft a, an ordinance, we have to be careful that we, we take, uh, note of those types of exceptions so that, um, we're not requiring something that's detrimental to the people that we're trying to protect. Um, and the CDC, we know, does not recommend masks with vents. You know, the, like the, the, uh, N ninety-five masks have vents in them. They don't recommend those for the purpose that we're talking, which a mask is primarily intended to keep, keep others safe from you, from you transmitting a disease to them. But if you have a vent in the mask, it, it doesn't do that very well. And they, they don't recommend using those masks for what's called source control. And also there is some controversy and it starts to get political at, at some point, but I know there's, there is at least one governor on the east coast that is implementing a ru- a rule or a law, executive order that prohibits towns and cities from implementing mask ordinances. The WHO says that at the present time, uh, use of masks everywhere is not supported by scientific evidence and a potential, there are potential benefits and harms. The CDC initially said masks don't do anything, but then they changed their minds and said masks work. The Surgeon General said that masks could actually make things worse, but later reversed that position a few months ago. So there, there, it appears to me as one counselor that the science on the prevention of the spread uh, with regard to masks is still a little unsettled. So in my view, I would prefer, I would prefer my own behavior is to try to lead by example. You'll see me wearing masks at meetings like this or in other situations where social distancing is not, uh, able to occur like in a, at the store or whatever. You, you try your best to stay six feet apart, but there are obviously times when things get crowded or you have to pass somebody and it's, it's best, you'll see me wearing a mask. But I'm, I am concerned about the heavy hand of, of, of government uh, stepping in and requiring, uh, things like this. And I would, I would prefer that, but as one, one individual, I would prefer that we ask people to use common sense, to use their own judgment, to keep s- social distancing and wear a mask when they can't maintain that social distance, rather than creating a law that requires it with, that has a potential of some penalty associated with it. And, and Mr. Chairman, that's, that's where I sit at this point, um, I wear a mask, I encourage others to wear a mask, and I, I encourage people to use their, their, their brain and also their empathy. Some people are very nervous when people are around them and they're not masked, and if it makes others more comfortable for you to wear a mask, then you should do it, just out of, out of, out of a source of empathy. And that's, that's my input at this point.
So that pretty much supports the resolution we have in place now? Cause we have a resolution in place, pretty much saying everything you just said, right?
Right.
Okay, yes?
I just had a, do you mind if I just quickly ask a question about what you just said, cause I'm a little confused. I thought this was an ordinance in case we had an outbreak, I thought, that's what we were talking about.
I'm, I'm not even saying we should go to an ordinance, it's only a discussion. My, my recommendation is, is that we listen to the fire chief and if we have an outbreak, give him the tools to be deal, to deal with it.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, I'm not, I think, I'm aligned with you, I mean, I'm talking about if there's an outbreak, there's a plan in place as to what we do, that's what I thought we were talking about, is a plan to, you know, pre-planning an issue. Not an everyday thing, I think, I think that what you just said is an everyday deal and I think that's a hundred percent what we wanna do. I mean, people wearing masks outside, I mean, it's ludicrous to me, you know what I mean, it's just, but in case there's an outbreak and we have five, six hundred people that have COVID nineteen, what do we do? Don't look at each other and say.
I, um.
It's a discussion.
I.
Sorry, Deb.
That's okay.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. I, I look at the reality of today, today, there were zero deaths reported in New Hampshire for, for the day. We are on the downside of the curve. We were hoping to try to, back in March, we were talking about trying to flatten the curve, we're, we're very much on the downside of the curve in New Hampshire. And, uh, so I, I don't see a scenario of a mass outbreak, especially, we're, we're also talking about a vaccine being somewhere in, in, in our near future. I, I think that the time, I think we're past that time when we could see a, a significant outbreak. And if we did, we also have the tools in place to have, for the chairman to call an emergency meeting and we can, I know we don't like to do things in a hurry, but we, we could react faster than, uh, several weeks or a month to get something in place. If it was truly a, a health emergency and an outbreak, I think, I think we could deal with it. I, I'm just, I'm just very, I'm very, wanna be very cautious about, um, and a governmental overreach, and in this case, we'd be the government that would, that perhaps would overreach, especially since, like I said, we're on the, our curve is very, very asymptotic to zero, uh, which is good, a good thing. And it could change and we need to be flexible to adjust to that if it does change, that's my thought.
All right, so I kind of agree with you, Tom. I think that Londonderry, um, during the peak of the epidemic, did very well. I think people were respectful, I think people were mindful, um, I think they did what they needed to do to help protect others, um, they came to action. So for me, I, I still think that, um, the mankind will do the right thing and care for each other and be mindful of each other. And so I do not think that we need an ordinance in place. Obviously, our response team did an excellent job because we didn't have a lot of outbreak. So therefore, what we're doing was, was, was good, and so we didn't need to improve on it. I, I, I feel like, um, it's, it's a personal choice and this is be, is still America and people have personal choices. But I do feel that people are very conscious of other people and can tell when somebody is uncomfortable and will automatically either move away if they don't have a mask on them, or will put their masks on. So for me, I think that the dis- the discussion really is that we don't need a discussion. There you go.
Chief?
Ms. Chairman, can I make a comment on that? Cause I think, I think that I'm on a different planet here tonight, I, I'm, I thought you made it, talked about wanting to make a discussion about planning. I think I, what I've heard from the other two counselors is saying about an ordinance. Where, I thought we all agreed that we don't have an ordinance, that we were not, or are not enacting an ordinance. I don't wanna have an ordinance, I don't wanna force people to do things that they don't wanna do. I'm saying, I was strictly talking about planning, this is what we're talking about, cases and outbreak, guys. That's what we're talking about, let's frame the question, so let's comment on that.
So the discussion is about, Chief has brought, how many cases do we have today, one?
Two.
We have two, we had zero for three days last week, right?
Yep.
All right, so you've raised the, the, um, the subject that the CDC is coming out with advance reports saying that, you know, things could, could change, which brought this discussion to the forefront. So you've heard what's said here, you're the emergency management director. What do you, what toolset do you need if there's an outbreak? Or do you need anything? The governor's already said a hundred and over have to wear a mask if it's a gathering of a hundred and over. Do you, i- i- if you don't need this tool, then we won't spend any more time on it?
No, I think would be a good thing to have, I think, you know, as, as we've always said, Londonderry has been leading the way. We, we've watched this throughout, since March. I think at our highest point, we're somewhere around forty-nine, forty-seven, forty-nine people in town at once. That's been on a constant decline, uh, we did reach zero, uh, for three days last week. It's on the incline again, I'm waiting to see now what's gonna happen, you know, with school starting and the testing going on in school. The rally that we had a couple of weeks ago, there's been no contact tracing to anything relative to that. So I think, you know, from what I've seen going around town, and I've made it perfectly clear to some establishments that I've been to that I've seen things that I don't necessarily like, and I've brought that to their attentions and I think everybody's trying to do the right thing. I think this is a tool, like Joe has stated, that if something, if, if the, something was to hit the fan and we needed to react quickly to, to imp- implicate something like this, I think that's what we're looking for. I, I don't think we need it right now, by any stretch of the imagination, I think we've, we've, we've been doing great throughout this whole thing. But I think, you know, it's something that, I mean, all the predictions going forward are, this is gonna get much worse, you know, come fall/winter season. I, I hear what you were saying, Councilor Dolan, and, but I've also heard reports that now some of the countries that have implicated these mass laws have found that their influencer has gone way down, you know, for them supposed to being at their peak right now, that has gone way down. So there's contradicting stories back and forth and, and opinions change all the time.
So let me see if I can frame up what you're saying is, is what, what you're saying is, is that if we did the pre-planning work, we don't need a, I, I, I agree, I don't think we need a, a mandated mask ordinance, I really don't. But if we did the pre-planning work, had something ready to go, and if we had an outbreak, we could call an emergency meeting, implement it, put a timeframe on it that you would manage.
Absolutely.
To take it on and off. If we needed to do that, if we had an outbreak.
Correct.
That would be a tool that you could use.
Instead of doing it in one week, spend the next couple of months preparing, you know what I mean, make sure that we're crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is.
Just have it in place if needed. Yes?
Um, I, if I'll walk from what you just said, I would not be adverse to do, doing a, a, um, a draft document, having it ready to go. I think what, what we did with the, uh, with the wa- water situation, we turned that over to the town manager that he can flip the switch, w- once he decides that we're in such a, a, a water problem, you go. I would, on, if we, if we were to do it for masks, I would wanna hold back the authority to the council that, where the, the chief could come to us and say, I think it's time to implement a, a mask, uh, situation and, and make the councils decide yes or no, as opposed to turning the, flipping the switch, uh, turn, turning the power to flip the switch over to the.
That certainly, that's, that's why you draft an ordinance.
So, so, and under those circumstances, I would, I would support the pre-planning for something like that.
I'm not talking about implementing anything, just have something that if the chief comes to us and says, we got a problem.
I, I just, I, I want the responsibility to flip the switch, to rest with the, with the council and not, uh, not with our health, uh, or, um, manager or our, our fire chief. I, I think, I think we own that responsibility and we need to, we need to exercise.
But I think, Ms. Chairman, I think that also what happens is that if we were to do it in a last-minute such a situation, we wouldn't be able to give the town people the chance to come up and talk about it and, 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 and give their feedback. And like you said, uh, Councilor Dolan, that, you know, there could be some other, you, you, you had a great list of people that should be excluded from it. There could be some other situations out there that we might wanna add to it. So putting that draft document out there and say, hey, how would this work in case of a outbreak? Remember, you're gonna be in a situation that we've never had in, in Londonderry. But I'm sure Massachusetts, when they were going up, they had some kind of a plan that they activated, which is why they went down the other way. I mean, there's, the, the planning piece has always been in my, in my world, the best way to do things, and that's all I'm trying to apply here.
So, we're strictly talking about planning, we'll write it up, but we're not gonna do anything.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I, I guess I'm confused because we were hit with a pandemic, y'all stuck, stood up and took place and things got done and we got it under control, and you did not have a plan, correct? You never had a plan for a pandemic before, correct?
Never had a plan for a pandemic, absolutely not.
Okay, yet, everything fell into place and you did an amazing job and everything was under control without this plan. Because we don't know that this new thing that's coming in, what it's gonna behave like. We don't know if it's gonna be contact, respiratory, we have no idea how it may or may not mutate. Masks may not even be the thing that people are gonna say we need, they might say we need rubber gloves, they may say something totally different, I don't know. So, yes, I understand why we're gonna, you know, spend time having something to be ready, cause I am the first person who wants plans. I wanted the water plans, I just said it about the dump, I believe that, but in this, this is a unique thing that happens, a, a, something that occurs and it's always different. And no matter how much we plan, we can't plan for what it's gonna be like. I, this is my own opinion, you know, I'm only one vote here, I don't, I don't have a lot, but it, it's just, to me, this is something that is gonna constantly grow and evolve, grow and evolve, grow and evolve, pending on what type of bacteria and how it moves and how it works. And I think you are astute and on top of things and are ready to come to a meeting and go, or email John or whoever's the chair at the time and say, look, this is what we need to do, and they just pull the trigger and that's what we do. And that's, again, how I feel, so I, I.
I got him first.
Don't think you can plan for this, I don't think you can plan.
Okay.
Uh, one thing you did mention, Chief, um, and for anyone who, who thinks my comments, uh, my prior comments meant that I don't take this virus seriously is, is mistaken, I take it very seriously. What I also take seriously is, is government overreach, and, and I'm, I'm struggling with that part of it. The, the other thing that, Chief, you, you touched on that I think is important to emphasize is we're, we're at the front end of the flu season, starting up. And nobody really knows what happens if you get COVID nineteen and the flu at the same time. It, it could be a whole nother shade of, of darkness.
Yeah, because last season, they were talking that you couldn't get them both at the same time, and now they don't know whether you can or not. Just like they said when, when people first started contacting COVID, that you can only get it once, but now they're finding people can be reinfected with it. So it's constantly evolving, and I agree with you, Deb, I mean, it could constantly evolve, you know, throughout the winter months, God only knows what's gonna happen.
So, like, as I said before, I, I'm gonna try to lead by example. I got my flu shot this week. I'm over sixty-five, so I got the extra strength flu shot, there is an extra strength one.
I heard that too.
And I can, anyone wants to talk to me afterwards, I don't wanna do a commercial, but I can tell you afterwards where I went and that it was free to get the flu shot. For those, some people are anti-vaccine, I understand that, that's, that's, again, a personal choice. I think we're, we'll be, again, another mistake of govern- government overreach if we said, start saying, you must get a, a vaccine, show me your paper where you've been vaccinated. I think, that's very dangerous in my, in my view and it's, it's concerning. But I felt I should get a vaccine, cause I think others should, and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna try, say you have to get one, but say, look at me, I got one. So hopefully, I won't get COVID and the flu at the same time, cause hopefully the flu's off the table.
Right.
But I'll also be first in line for a COVID vaccine when it comes out, if, if they allow me to be first in line. But, uh, I, I, again, I'll try to lead by example, but I, I just, I feel, um, very uncomfortable at this point with, uh, government telling you what you have to do and then, and then threatening you with fines or whatever, some type of punishment for, for, for not complying. And that, that makes me uncomfortable, especially, it wasn't very many weeks ago where the federal government was, was telling us masks don't work. In fact, some, the surgeon general said masks make things worse because it means you're touching your face to adjust the mask with your dirty hands. So, uh, I don't know, it, this, this, this whole thing is, uh, I can't wait for this to be behind us.
You and me both.
All right, so let me reiterate, we're not looking to mandate a mask ordinance, just so it's very clear to everybody. All right, so, Chief, how, how long have you been chief?
Uh, nine years now.
Okay, so for eight years, you and I would talk occasionally, I'd be looped in on some emails, mostly be on fire scenes or something like that, right? So in the last six months, would you say it would be fair to say that, uh, the council and myself and you, there probably have been hundreds of conversations? Would you say we've had hundreds of plans? Would you say they've changed hundreds of times? It's the same thing with this. All, all, all I'm asking you is, is do you want us to work on a plan that may change ten more times?
I think it'd be something good to have in our back pocket if the time comes that we find that we're gonna receive something that's more, more serious than what we're looking for.
Cause we don't know what we don't know.
Cause we don't know what we don't know.
I just wanna make sure, I'm framing, like, because, you know, we talked about this a few weeks ago, I'm trying to frame it the right way, yes?
Yeah, it's just funny because we, we all talked about, I think, Councilor, uh, Deb said that, you know, hey, we didn't have a plan before. That's exactly the reason why we wanna have one, you know what I mean, that, so you're, you're, you're supporting the reason why.
Not, not trying to play catch-up, I mean, I'm basing all my decisions on, you know, the governor, the governor's orders, the health department's orders, the attorney general's, uh, you know, guidelines and stuff like that. I, I spoke with Barbara this afternoon over at the library, um, the, the guidelines for libraries is very vague. She asked, do you think we should reopen? I said, in my opinion, no. I said, uh, you know, I thought it was very difficult to, to be able to follow patrons around in the library and disinfect every book or every computer that they touch, I think, I think it's gonna be a logistical nightmare. So, you know, we had a long discussion this afternoon on, you know, different things that she can implement to maybe let some people back in. But, I mean, this, this is every day, it's every day.
People are getting tongue-up on the word mask, cause there's, there's, there's left aisle and the right aisle. I, I think what I'm trying to talk about is, in case something happens that, I mean, we, we can put our heads in the sand and say, pretend that, you know, this is not possible, it's not gonna happen. Or we can say, you know what, I wanna be si- I wanna be prepared, I wanna be ready. And yeah, it's great, knock on wood, that things are, things are going the way they are, but because we didn't have a plan before, doesn't mean, and we did well, doesn't mean that we shouldn't plan ahead and get, and again, take the mask word off of it, take, you know, safety ordinance, whatever you wanna call it. Cause people are getting too hung up on the masks, like, as Councilor Dolan said, we don't even know if it's really working, the mask. I'm saying, if a, if a major problem spikes, what exactly should we do in, 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 in consequence to, to what you've been saying?
Right, and we will, we will follow the guidelines that are set forward by the state, the federal government. I, I think, I think our, our health department has been top-notch, um, to talk about exactly the curve that you're talking about. I mean, New Hampshire's number has been pretty steady all the way along, I think we're probably the, what, fourth, fourth lowest in the, in the country, you know? So we're doing well, and I think we've done, we've all done a good job at it. I'm just hoping that, you know, it continues on this path, and if it doesn't continue on this path and we find that we need to do different things, that we have a plan in place, you know, before, rather than trying to catch up afterward, that's all I'm asking.
I just don't see how you can write a plan if you don't know what it is, and we don't know. I mean, we could talk about a zombie apocalypse, I mean, let's be, we don't know, you know? We don't know what the next phases are gonna be, so how can you write an ordinance saying this is how it's gonna be?
I think it's an ordinance, I think it's an ordinance, Deb, just, and, you know, this is just in the planning stage, that if they come to us and, at the end of November and say, you know, these things are the only thing that's gonna protect us from this, that, that's something that we look at then, you know?
I, I think that the, the state has done a very good job, and I think you've done a great job by following what the state has said we should do. And I, to me, I, again, I, I just think that, I'm all for ordinances that you can enforce and actually do something. Even then, how are you gonna enforce everyone wearing a mask? If that's part of it.
I don't think it would be a matter of enforcement, I think it would be a matter of education.
So therefore, we don't know, I don't know, again, I just, I don't think ordinances educate people, I think information educates people.
No, and I don't think anybody on, on the emergency service side is looking to, if, if we would have to do something like this, going out and slapping people a thousand dollar fines because they're not wearing masks, that's not what we're looking to do, we're just looking to, you know.
Try to have something that's a formality, puts it in form that you can point to.
Change it to a resolution though, if you want, if you're hung up on the ordinance word, I mean, that's what I'm saying, this is a plan.
The question is here is, is do we want the staff to work on something with the fire chief in the event that we have a major outbreak? in the event that we have a major outbreak which, you know, may or may not happen and so that we're planning ahead in case something does happen?
Safety resolution. Is that, is that better for everybody?
I, I, I call it whatever you want, but do you, do you want the staff to work on a plan with the Fire Chief to bring something to the council that in the event of a major breakout, we know what the first step is that we're gonna take?
Yep, that's what I would like.
I would say, I would say yes with the caveat that I mentioned that I, I want the, I want the responsibility to wrestle the council to trip it.
Agreed. Yeah, and I think we get into those details, so that's what you need.
That's all we need.
Okay. I mean, I'll support it 'cause it's what you want.
Uh, I struggle with it. Um, I'm only one vote, so I, I used to sit on New Hampshire readiness. And are you gonna include that? 'Cause New Hampshire was, we worked with Alaret, with a lot of that, and we were talking about what happens if, in New Hampshire readiness, if we need hospital rooms. Do we have that? Is that gonna be included? Where we will have makeshift hospitals, where we're gonna have carts, flashlights, um, extra medical su, um, supplies stashed somewhere. 'Cause, but it's different than just a pandemic. This is a pre-readyness thing that is, if a plane, explosion happened and the nuclear power plant there, some terrible toxins came out. I mean, this is like, that's what we talked about there. Um, we talked about, um, things such as, and is it gonna be more towards not just a, a viral pandemic, but any kind of pandemic meeting? You know, some sort of, you know, warfare, bacterial warfare, whatever, that we're gonna have a place that's designated for beds, 'cause that was the big issue.
So, early on in all the emails that we all received, early on in the pandemic, we would get that every day and there was plans for that.
So we have those already written?
So, remember the emails early on? At one point, we were gonna turn the Londonderry Jim into a hospital? That's all in process inside the county and the state and the agencies and everything already. That was in the emails that we were getting from the police chief and everything early, from the Fire Chief.
But their ideas.
Early on.
You know, their ideas, we gotta follow them.
They have those plans already.
Okay, so we're not writing from scratch. We're gonna take,
We're simply talking about what the Fire Chief needs to react quickly if he's faced with a major outbreak in the town of Londonderry.
Okay, that I'm okay with.
That's, that's all, that's, that's what you asked for, right?
That's, that I'm okay with. I mean, but to isolate it to just this virus, like, that's what I think people were hearing, that we're isolating it just to this little thing. And we're not. It's, it's if any sort of major emergency happens in this town, we're gonna have a root of a plan, just like an escape where house catches on fire.
Those plans already exist.
We already have those.
Those plans already exist. He's asking for something specific for this situation. All the things you talk about, those plans all exist already. We already have a plan for how to evacuate the power plant. That all exists.
All right, then, I, I don't, I personally don't see the need for any other.
Okay, so the consensus is, is to have the, uh, staff work with the Fire Chief to see what we can do to help him with that or any other additional tools he feels he's gonna need.
And, and we'll monitor it as we go. I mean, we, I,
Hey, hopefully, we're not gonna need anything and this is gonna stay the way it is.
Absolutely. Like I said, we lead the way in doing a lot of things, so I'm hoping that we continue on this path going forward. But it's just a tool to have in the toolbox in case something, something goes bad. That's all.
Okay.
And Darren, thank you for everything you do as well. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Darren. Thank you for all the hard work over there.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And, and you as well, um, Chief, uh, Chief Hart. I know the, uh, the, the guys are all, and the gals over there are all doing their best as well. Okay, moving on. Discussion of potential water restrictions. So this was tabled from the last meeting. Does anyone want to further address this ordinance?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Um, I think it's a huge jump from two hundred and fifty to a thousand. And I think that that should be lowered a little bit, maybe five hundred. Um, I also have an issue as far as actually enforcing this. And, and I really wish that it would include, um, the word municipalities in there. Again, like Mr. Dolan said, leading by example. And I do wanna address a comment that Mr. Young made at the school board meeting in regards to this ordinance. Um, I did some research and I called the, um, Department of Environmental Resources in regards to this. Yes, the fields have their own pond, but that water comes from somewhere. It's not always just drained unless it was a, just rain, excuse me. It's not like a tank of water or a water tower that, yes, that's all the water you collected. But when you pull from a pond, any pond, whether it's man-made or natural, you are pulling from the, um, the water course underground, so you are pulling from somebody else's well. You're pulling from the table. So, when the schools say, or the town says recreation fields are using their own ponds, they are in fact still taking water. And we haven't had that issue this year with any wells drying up or anything, which is wonderful. And yes, the water is low, but it is a, a, a thing that I think that we have to hold everyone accountable. Like the gentleman who said here, you know, why a golf course is accepted and, and, you know, Joe can't water his new, um, hydro seeded grass? And why can the town water their field, their town common or the lawn in front of their thing, but we can't do ours? And so for me, I struggle with this ordinance big time.
Okay, so the ordinance was accepted and passed the last time, so,
I just wanted to say that to people 'cause,
So you'd be looking to reopen this and have a new public hearing?
I, I, it's what you guys wanna do. That's how I feel about it.
No, it's not what you guys wanna do.
But then maybe it's a discussion, John, to see if anybody feels the way I do.
So here, so the process is,
Okay.
There's an ordinance in place.
Yep.
If you wanna reopen it for a new public hearing and readdress all those issues, you can do that as one counselor. You can ask for that. It's put on the agenda as an item and, and you can do that.
Okay, then I would like to do that.
Well, then we can do that at another meeting, so, 'cause we have to schedule all that and we have to go into public hearings.
Okay.
So for tonight,
Okay.
does anyone wanna implement any phase of this ordinance? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when we did this, uh, previously last, was it last summer or the summer before? I forget which, when it was, but,
Oh, it was a few years ago.
A few years ago.
A few years ago. Uh, I, I, I was inundated with emails and phone calls from residents who were, hey, they had problems with their wells. They're going dry or slowly recovering, uh, quality of the water, uh, and so forth and so on. I can tell you, this year, with the exception of, uh, Ms. Melly, I haven't had a single phone call or a single email on this topic.
Now, how does that make sense with, with, with the situation we're under right now? It's just, it's the same situation, but we're not getting, no phone calls. We were getting killed two years ago.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm using, I'm using the, the, the amount of communication to me as a temperature gauge of, no pun intended, of the, of the severity of the drought. And so, it, it appears to me that we're not, we're not ready to implement, um, a stop-using-water ordinance. Because evidently, uh, based on my unscientific, uh, reception of, uh, of, uh, requests, that it's not a real big issue right now for the town and we're moving out of our summer heat period. Uh, and we, uh, we shouldn't be having so many dead lawns and so forth that need to be watered. Uh, so, I, I'm, it's my view that we don't have the, we're not at an emergency level that needs water restrictions being put in place. That's my thought. I, I think it's, uh, that, that would be my input to the town manager, which I believe he has the authority to put this, to, to trip this, right?
Only until the next council meeting.
So, my, my thought is, I don't think we need,
So we're at the same place as last meeting.
I agree with that.
All right, let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. Can I just ask, Lisa, do you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Well, I, I mean, you've already come to your consensus, so. Um, I did just wanna point out very quickly that, just so everyone is aware, there have been some residents who have, um, had their wells run dry, that we've had some anecdotal evidence of that.
New data from the,
Including one of our employees, unfortunately. Several of the local municipalities around us have imposed water restrictions to include Derry, Wyndham, Bedford, Palom, Merrimack. Yep, exactly. So, and the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, is urging municipalities to put water restrictions in place, specifically with regard to lawn watering because that is the largest driver of water use, so. Having said all that, however.
Well, it looks like this thing's coming back at the next meeting anyway to get revisited as the ordinance was written, so I guess we'll revisit it again then.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, um, one other thing, I, I, it's kinda like, I see people wearing masks when they're in their car by themselves, driving down the highway. It's, it kinda makes you think, "What's going on in there?"
You think they're going to a bank.
The, the same, this, a similar, in a similar vein, I see people's automatic lawn sprinklers going full tilt during a rainstorm.
Yep.
I, I, so I think there are common sense things that people can do. You can turn that sprinkler system off if you're, if you're at home when it's raining out. You don't need to be using water when it's raining. So I, I think there are some things that you don't need to wear a mask when you're alone in your own car. And you don't need to be having your sprinkler system running full tilt while it's raining out. I, I, I think there are measures we can take that are common sense that, that,
Okay, so would you like the ordinance on as an old, uh, old business item for the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the request, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. No, I mean, any counselor could put anything on the agenda. If that's your request, then it goes on.
Thank you. And when do you do that in the meeting? When is the appropriate, like, if I wanted to put something on the agenda, when is the appropriate time to do that, or do I just call Kirby?
Send me an email.
Okay.
All right.
If, if I may, the, the, uh, one of the most important additional duties of the, the chairman of the council is to set the agenda. So you need to tell the coun, the chairman that you wanna do that.
Any counselor can put anything they want on the agenda. There's no restriction to that.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Approval of August thirty-first minutes. Kind of a motion to approve, please?
So moved?
Deb, you're gonna have to second since Joe wasn't here.
I'll second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved.
I understand.
Um, all right, so hi, so we have interviews coming up. Um, my plan is, since Counselor, since Counselor Jim Butler's not here, is that we do appointments at the next meeting after we complete these interviews. Everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is Jason Knights here? Hi, sir, how are you? Come on up.
These are all Planning Board interviews?
I have two Planning Board and one Traffic Safety. I'm sorry, Jason, just give me a moment here.
No worries.
I'm just trying to find your, um, your form.
It came in late. I sent it in this morning, so.
So, so I don't, um, Kirby, do I not have his form?
I have one for him.
You have one for him?
It's the second one in.
Second one in?
That's in there.
You wanna use mine?
Oh, got it. I write small.
Yeah, no, no worries. So, um, so Jason, you're interested in the Planning Board. Um, generally, what, um, we'd like to do is we usually give you an opportunity, if you wanna make some sort of an opening statement of, you know, what your interests are. Um, obviously, your address is Nine Hall Road for our records. Um, would you like to do that, or would you like us just to move to questions?
Uh, sure, I can say something about that.
Sure, that'd be great.
Um, I have, uh, spent the last two years on the Heritage Commission. I've lived in town for fifteen years. Um, both of, one, one child has gone through the system. I've got another one who's a senior right now. Uh, so the kids are getting older, so I've got more time to be able to devote to things like this. Um, I am a, I grew up in Litchfield, so I am familiar. I've seen the area and the town progress over the decades and I feel as though it's, you know, time to start giving back.
All right, so I'll go from right to left. Deb, do you have any questions for Jason?
Um, sure. Uh, what do you think you'd bring to the board that's different from the other Planning Board members that are already existing?
I mean, in terms of a, a difference from what they're doing now?
A different perspective, point of view, added value that you could bring to enhance what's already existing?
Sure. Uh, well, I have a, um, a background in marketing. So, a lot of what I, the way I look at things tends to be from a, uh, kind of a, a, a perception viewpoint. You know, so it's, uh, I think part of the thing with Planning Board is trying to create a town that, that is what you want while also allowing for growth and revenue growth and, and just the growth that's naturally gonna happen. So it's about planning, but it's also about, um, keeping the town something that people would wanna move to and, uh, that people wanna stay in.
I just wanna make a comment, um, something I learned, is the Planning Board isn't necessarily, something that plans for the vision of the town. You really have to understand site plans and work with conservation and understand, you know, what the setbacks are and things like that. So it, it is not necessar, I always thought planning meant to plan for the future, but it does not in, in the town municipal world. It means, um, that you just look at the sites that are, plans that are before you, so, um, thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Yes.
All right, first wanna thank you for stepping up and, uh, and volunteering, um, and, and, and being a part of this, the process because giving back to the town, obviously, is, goes to all of our hearts here. You know, look, so, when you look at the different boards that we have opened up, you, you picked Planning Board for a reason. And I understand you, you, have you ever been to a Planning Board meeting yet?
I have not, no.
Okay. So what, what is the exact reason that you feel that you would be perfect for the Planning Board as opposed to some of the other boards?
I'm sorry, um, I think it's a logical next step from Heritage Commission.
Okay.
Um, in terms of, um, you know, working with development, working with, um, uh, helping to see the development plan go through, you know, it first goes to heritage and then it goes to planning, so I was thinking that would be a, a logical next step from the Heritage Commission.
Is, is there anything, last question, is there anything that you've seen uh, that has been a little bit more controversial, uh, that you feel that you could have, uh, maybe been more influential to turn the other way?
Not necessarily. I mean, like, I know there's been some controversial developments in town. But honestly, if you look at them, the decisions were made based on the evidence that was given at the time and the, and the, um, the regulations and the ordinances that were in place at the time. So I wouldn't preclude to judge what anybody else has come up with for, um, for their decisions.
So it sounds like even though you haven't been to the planning, uh, meetings, you've followed, uh, the process pretty quick?
I have, yes.
Okay, great, that's what I was trying to get at. Good, thank you.
Tom?
Well, thank you for stepping up and volunteering. Our volunteers are really the backbone of, uh, of how we manage the community. And also, thank you for enduring the sausage-making of local governments that you witnessed earlier tonight. That's, uh, that's, uh, very common and that's, that's how, how we do things. Do you have, let me ask you this, do you, do you feel you have any conflicts of interest, uh, that might present themselves if you were on a Planning Board?
No. No. I, I work at Southern New Hampshire University and, and we're not planning on expanding the campus down here, so.
'Cause you haven't had the right conversation.
That's right, Woodmont might have a, a building for you. Uh, and, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
So, um, so when, I spent eleven years on the Planning Board. And in two thousand and six, uh, Tom Dolan was, I think it was, I think it was two thousand and six, he was the chairman of the Town Council. And he caught me in some store somewhere and says, "Hey, what do you think about running for Town Council?" I looked at him, I said, "What, are you crazy?" But then Woodmont came. And, you know, and I ran for Town Council, so many years later. Um, part of, um, I, you're right on all the aspects of it. Planning does shape the town. By its, by its rules and regulations and its ordinances. And a lot of the land use ordinances start out of there and finish here. So, um, paying attention and doing those things and watching all those things, those are all the right things. Planning is not only the most, one of the most difficult boards in town, it is also probably the, one of the more interesting boards in town. But it's also one of the most powerful boards in town. So, um, sometimes you're gonna be stuck in a position in which you have to hold the line. How do you feel about that?
I'm absolutely fine with that, as long as there is rationale behind it, and as long as there is evidence to back it up.
What if everything follows the law, says it's the law, you have no choice but to follow it? What do you do?
I, if that's the law, you know, I mean, like, the law is the, in terms of government, you know, the law is the structure upon which we exist, so.
I can't tell you how many times I didn't like what I had to do and, and found out how little power I had over certain things.
Mm-hmm.
So, as long as you're comfortable with that, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely have opinions on things and I'm generally not, um, a retiring law flower to give them. But to be honest, if, if it gets to a point where it is what it is, then, you know, you have to vote with what's right. Not necessarily what you want, if that's the case.
It will be a very interesting predicament, you'll be in. I appreciate you stepping up. We're, as you heard me say, we're gonna vote next week. I did notice that Mr. Wiles is missing, so, um, but we'll vote next week and we'll get back to you.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you have any questions for us before you go?
Uh, nope.
Thank you very much for, for waiting around.
Oh, no worries, thank you.
Um, so I don't see Lynn Wiles here. I know he's running the solid waste committee meeting right now. He did contact Kirby and I. And I said we interview him in the next meeting and then go right to voting, if he didn't attend. Um, I'm, I'm guessing it's Mr. Paul Peddell? Guess it's you, sir? Hey, sir, how are you?
Hey, good.
Um, if you, you can take your mask off if you want, or you can leave it on, it's up to you. You're, um, six feet away from anybody, so that's acceptable for us. Um, you're looking at the traffic safety committee, um, would you, I'm looking for your form, would you like to open up with, um, your thoughts about why you'd like to join the committee?
Yeah, uh, recent opening on that committee, I know, I know became available. I've been a resident in town for about twenty-five years or so, twenty-four years. Seen the town go through a lot of change. Um, recent, recently, uh, graduated from Leadership Londonderry, so looking to.
You look familiar.
Yeah, yeah, looking to, uh, just participate in town. Like I said, it's been a long time, kind of dipping my toe in the water and, uh, for, from a committee standpoint, but I knew there was an opening.
Um, so what do you think about the traffic in town?
So as an agent, a real estate agent in town, so I see a lot of growth. There's a lot of apartment complexes coming in, a lot of great commercial development. Woodmont, everyone's talked about. Whole COVID situation's bringing a lot more people into town, so I think it's changing a lot. So I know, um, I sat in one committee meeting already, and in that session alone, you know, there was someone that brought up Litchfield Road and how that's changed. Again, commercial development happening in town and Londonderry truly becoming a destination as Woodmont continues to be developed. So as I drive around town, I see a lot of different things myself that, you know, could be improved on, but it's a place for residents to, you know, obviously bring their issues and concerns, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, just going right to left tonight, no particular.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Um, I was at that meeting.
Right.
And I, and I guess I'm kind of confused, and I don't know if this is appropriate right now, John. There was another fellow that was interviewed and applied, um, who was at that same meeting that you were at for the same position, yet I don't see him here.
I have to go back.
I know, I'm just saying, I, I, getting a little confused is how we're doing these, um, things, cause it seems like it's a long period of time and that we used to have really strict cutoffs and now we're kind of.
Welcome to COVID.
Yeah, well, I, I just hope that those formalities don't get lost when COVID's back.
I just want to let you guys know, he didn't properly fill out his town name form. We asked him to a few times. I know Bob did as well, I mean, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, cause I, I saw him hand it to Bob at the meeting, so.
It was, he didn't answer any of the questions and Bob wanted him to. From what I.
He's the chairman.
Okay, so that's how it works? The chairman says whether, if you apply?
I mean, if he still wants to come in and be interviewed.
I, I don't know. I just, I just wanted to be sure that we're following everything that we're supposed to, to the rules.
Has, this is the first I'm hearing of this, I mean, he's the chairman, he's asking to fill out the form. I'm happy to interview any resident.
No, I agree, John.
This gentleman's been made aware he, to fill out the rest? Okay.
Okay.
So why doesn't somebody call him tomorrow? And, 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 you know, and find out if he's still interested?
I, I just want to be fair, I.
Yeah, yeah, listen, no issues.
You have any questions for Paul?
We have the, we have.
No, it's all good.
We have this thing, it's got numbers on it, and we can call him and ask him.
Okay. So you saw how the meeting went?
Yes.
How did you feel as far as it went for resolve? Did you feel like the residents that were there that night got resolve? Or what do you think you would change or bring to that, that would be different than what happened that night? I mean, it was a very heated and passionate night.
Like I said, I have the gentleman that brought that particular concern. I thought there was good discussion on that topic, and there's a lot of more discussion, I think, that probably needs to have it, just to be consistent on how we make those changes in town. And that discussion, it was like feeder discussions, feeder roads.
Right, right.
Um, so I think there's other roads that could fit into that category as well, so to hit those consistently as well and consider those.
Yeah.
I guess, so more consideration.
Personally, I think that somebody from, and I can't tell you to do this or not, but someone who sits on, um, the safety committee should come to council meetings and to planning board to see what's coming, to understand, you know, what's gonna be laid before them, um, and, and actually to feed into those meetings, you know, what's going on with people complaining. So when you hear about traffic studies, you could step out and say.
Just based on complaints, but, you know, proactive.
Yeah, yeah, very proactive, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Joe?
Well, I just, I'm gonna ask the same question I asked, uh, of the last person, you know, what is the real reason why you're, you're driving towards this particular? I know you said that, I read your statement, you have grandchild and, you know, and all this other stuff, and, uh, you know, that you really, uh, saw the opening, but is there something specific that you're, you're trying to get at by being on the committee?
I mean, it's truly driving around town, I think all of us probably see different things that we would change or potentially change, or speeding, et cetera, happening in town. Um, so I think it's just a place where I, I see residents, you know, bring their concerns, but I, I did think there was more of a proactive side of it as well. So hopefully I'll bring some of that.
Being more proactive, you think, is, is, is the point?
That's what I, I guess I thought there was more of that type of activity involved than not just waiting for a complaint to come in. I mean, it's a pretty strong committee that, who sits on that actual committee, it's a.
Yeah, but is that, I mean, again, not to say anything that, I'm not saying bad or good that they're doing, I'm saying is that what you're trying to bring is more of that, you know, proactive approach and let's, let's drive to.
Yes.
I think what Council Paul said, I mean, let's, let's, let's drive this to fruition, let's speak to the council and see what they can do, let's bring the police chief in and, you know, kind of, kind of deal.
Even things we see around town, just driving around town, so proactively bringing those things forward as well. Again, there's a lot of growth happening in town, it's gonna continue to happen, a lot of new developments coming in. There'll be a lot of, um, apartment complexes, you know, high density type stuff coming in that's impacting our roads, those type of things, so.
Yep, I just want to let everybody know that I know Paul very well. He's a guy that is gonna do what he says he's gonna do. He's passionate about what he puts his mind to, and I think, uh, any committee, uh, that we have in Londonderry would be very fortunate to have Mr. Peddell, so.
Thanks, Joe.
All to you, Mr. Dolan.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman, I would, uh, first like, like to thank you for being a volunteer in the community. You attended Leadership Londonderry, that's a lot of, that's a big commitment.
Yeah.
Uh, it's important to understand how the lo- local government works and the school department works.
Do that.
And you're serving on, in the alert.
I'm on alert as well, yep, on the alert team, yeah.
Many people have forgotten and don't, don't realize that the alert program was born out of the Londonderry Rotary Club. Uh, and that's, uh, just a little history lesson there. Now, how do you feel about conflicts of interest? That being a Realtor or a developer can sometimes, uh, render a conflict of interest if you come across a property that you might be representing or a development that you, that your, your Realtor team might be representing. How, how do you, how do you propose to deal with that if that, if that comes up?
I don't see that happening, Tom. I know that, I can, I can see it from the growth standpoint, and knowing different communities that have come into town and, and recognizing that. Like a fifty, the fifty plus communities that we have and the density that's in those and what's gonna create traffic issues there. But I guess I don't see a definite con- conflict there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So Paul, do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. I don't think so, John, no.
That'd be great. No, listen, thanks for participating in Leadership Londonderry, very much appreciated.
Good, good.
Um, you've probably heard us say we're gonna, you know, vote next week and make the appointments next week. It's been a little slow because of, directly because this whole thing has really thrown us kind of upside down. Um, appreciate you sitting here and, um, participating and watching how we do things tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Alrighty. Alright, liaison reports. Anyone have a liaison report that you want to talk about?
The, uh, the Butterfly Garden is no longer going to use the town property. Mr. Mack has graciously given us the whole pumpkin patch. So this way we don't have to worry about sightlines or infringing on the forest or getting soil samples or any of that other stuff. So we're gonna be doing that, and we have, um, a meeting if anyone wants to come. It's at the, um, Suite 111, um, at the clock tower at Fifty Nashua Road at six o'clock on September twenty-fourth.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Anything else? So everyone knows, all still quiet at the airport, although we did need some help from the airport director this weekend, and he responded immediately. And, uh, as usual, they always step right up to the plate immediately, the airport. Town manager report.
Few items, Mr. Chair. Uh, first thing is, just want to give, uh, commendation to everyone that helped out at the, uh, elections last week. The primary elections really went off without a hitch. Um, we had a, I think, close to a little over two thousand absentee ballots, which were about forty percent of everyone who voted, uh, which is pretty remarkable.
I had heard from the moderator that we had three hundred at the last one, and we had twenty-one hundred, so that's a seven hundred percent increase.
Yeah, yeah.
In absentee ballots.
Good news is, they were all processed on the same day. There weren't any delays from the postal service I'm aware of, and, uh, all the results, uh, the unofficial results were, uh, called out by nine o'clock that evening. So, uh, just, um, kudos to Jonathan Kip in it, in it being his first time as, as moderator, and again, uh, thanks to everyone else who, uh, participated in that, uh, we'll need all hands on deck again as we go into November, uh, for sure. Next, I did say I was gonna have an update on the St. Cobain issue, so there's been a little bit of news that's transpired since our last meeting. They had asked for a variance from the New Hampshire Department Division of Air Resources. Uh, they were looking for a, a year delay in bringing their, uh, plant, uh, up to, um, agreed upon code with the, uh, amount of toxins that they're admitting from that plant. That variance request was denied, uh, by the state. Uh, and I've spoken to, uh, one of the councillors over in Merrimack and told them that the town, uh, is willing to be a party to whatever, uh, we can do to help Merrimack as this goes through the appeals process. No doubt, St. Cobain will appeal that decision. Just so everyone understands kind of the chain events from here. They do have thirty days to file an administrative appeal with the Air Resources Council, and if they're unsuccessful at that, then they can appeal at the New Hampshire, uh, Supreme Court, uh, at which time our legal counsel has said that, uh, if we choose to do so, we could probably be a friend of the court, is what they call it. Uh, we wouldn't be a party to the case, but a friend of the court to support, uh, Merrimack in, uh, seeking the further denial of that, uh, variance request. Uh, so we'll keep you updated, uh, on that. And, uh, just an, another quick update, uh, the trees at the common, we had another tree specialist go out and look at them who agreed that, uh, the trees, those tall, I guess they're, they're a family of pines, uh, are dying. But they did not believe they posed an imminent risk going into the winter. And so what I have advised Steve Cotton to do for now is not do anything before the winter time, uh, because I'd like to save that money, uh, later until we see where we are toward the end of the fiscal year next spring. We can always take them down in the springtime, but it doesn't seem to pose a, a risk going into the winter time. So I would, I'd just like to save that money, uh, and not take them down right now. And that is all I have.
So Lisa, before I jump to you, I just want one item that was not on the agenda that I do have an email on. Um, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Benson from the planning board. Um, he has been battling some health issues. He's been on the planning board for the last eleven years. And, um, as he says in his email, he says, cannot, could, good conscience continue because he just, for health issues, he just cannot serve. So if I can have a, a motion to accept.
So good.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Scott. Um, Lisa?
Uh, just very quickly, Leadership Londonderry has resumed for this year. Uh, we have sixteen class members. Um, and so we've had our first class session, the next one will be in October, and that will be the public safety session, which is always very popular. And I just wanted to mention that not only Mr. Peddell was a Leadership Londonderry grad, but so too was Mr. Knights, who was here earlier interviewing for the planning board, so.
Fantastic, means the program's working.
That's right, churning out some great volunteers.
I, I, I had a couple of questions, um, for Kevin.
Sure.
The, the siding, do, are we still moving forward with that or not?
We are, yes.
I had a, I had, uh, I want to say four or five residents, and then they asked me questions, so I'm gonna ask you what they asked me.
Okay.
They said, so we're gonna side i- and then unside it again when we build?
If we build.
If we build, okay. Right.
Okay, so we are gonna side it, cause they were saying, a couple, one of the guys was a builder that contacted me, and he said that you didn't need to put the siding on, cause it has that Trex, uh, winterizing thing, and then it should be just fine for the winter. And then, so instead of, if we're gonna wait to make a decision, the frugal thing to do would be to leave the Trex not sided. I know we already voted on it and stuff, but this information came after the fact when they saw the meeting. And they said, you know, maybe you want to think about not doing it, save those, that five thousand.
Yep.
Because if you do decide to put it on.
Yep.
You're gonna kind of be putting it on to take it off, to put on in addition. So that, that was something, and back to the water thing, I had, um, a woman contact me, a lovely lady, uh, who was saying, how she was trying to get an, uh, an abatement on her house because she's affected by Cobain and has drinking water. And she can't shower or cook or use her water at all, and so she felt that that, we should be able to give her some sort of an abatement on her taxes. After speaking with, uh, the lovely young lady in the taxing department, they said that they, we don't have anything that applies to that, and I don't know if that's something like, I mean, Merrimack has to have something where, like, you're not being able to, cause you can't assess someone who has no water with someone who has water. Use wa- you know, if you can't use the water in your house, it's like, you can't say that that house is valued at the same as a house with unusable water. And so I don't, I, I mean, they must have to do it in Merrimack and stuff, in Litchfield.
I don't know what they've done in Merrimack. I will tell you that we did talk about this subject at length with our town attorney. And the, that issue alone, if you were just looking at it in a vacuum, uh, would not affect the value, the assessment value of a home if they're in that groundwater management zone of St. Cobain. You have to look at what the market has done in that entire area. And at least when we visited the last time, homes are still selling, uh, at market rate that have been affected, uh, by St. Cobain. So you, you, that issue alone would not affect assessment value.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I mean, I, I, I can see how it could. Uh, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know, I question it. It just doesn't seem quite fair. I mean, if you were looking at two houses on the street, Joe's house has perfectly fine water and my house, and with the same exact house, in my house, you have to put a two thousand dollar filter in every three months in order to use your water. Which house would be assessed higher? His house, because this house comes with rules to it, or would sell higher? I mean, if I was picking, I'd pick his house because if it's exactly the same, like you're saying, square footage and.
It's, it's a hot market.
I.
People, people are buying homes that, you know, for, for prices that, the water may be fine. I mean, it's, it's silly what homes are selling for. Some may be, like I said, some may be in that, that groundwater management zone, some are not. But it, it, from what we have seen right now in the, the market and what homes are selling for in that particular area, it hasn't affected the sale price.
Okay, I guess that I, I think it's weird, but, okay. But in the future, we might want to think about it if things progress, so that we have something to pull from, if that happens. Cause if it does happen, which the housing market could stop, and, uh.
The whole private well thing is, has a whole different set of laws that, you know, it's just different.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not something dead that we haven't looked into. It, it was brought up. It was brought up.
I just feel bad. It's an older woman who's been in town for many, 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 many years and, you know, she's looking for a little relief, you know, that she's getting this water. I mean, that's got to, imagine if you had to get bottled water for everything you did in your house. It's kind of, kind of bad. And it's like, I think, just two people that are suffering from it in town. I don't think it's a huge, like 100 people are going to come knocking on your door looking for abatements for it. Anyway, okay, sorry, good night.
Okay, so, one last thing is, is just so everyone understands with the polls, the council is responsible for clearing the path to the polls. And I had this discussion with the moderator, so I wanted to reiterate it here. While the moderator is responsible in the polling place, the council has to make sure parking lots are clear, police are available for directing traffic, streets are clear. So, when the schools opened on the same day, we only had 3,200 people come to the polls. So, the polling place was available and ready, but it was every person on deck directing traffic out on Mammoth Road when the schools opened and closed. And literally, every person was out there directing traffic, whoever was available, including myself. So, it was, it was an interesting day and the, but it got pulled off. The thing to keep in mind here is, is we're going to probably have 5,000 absentee ballots for November 3rd and we're looking at probably 9,000 people coming to the polls versus 14,600.
Schools will be closed?
And schools will be closed. So, we'll be putting out information around detours, paths to the polls, and once again, every person available will be out there moving traffic. And with the new poll pads and we can transition people out of the, out of the voting place, it should go well. But do keep in mind, if you need absentee ballots, send your form in.
Mr. Chairman, will we expect a different traffic pattern where people will be exiting the high school to the right of the access center?
Same traffic patterns we had in 2018. So, they'll remove the rocks at the Cable Center.
Right.
And they'll be exiting out through Matthew Thornton.
Right.
So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, we, one.
Yes.
I was second for discussion.
Sure.
Where is our next meeting location?
Just going to ask.
Right now, it says that we're in the cafeteria, but our Cable Center Director has asked us to move over here because with schools starting, it's much, it's much more conducive to being able to broadcast live from here.
That's why I asked.
So, we're looking at our next meeting as September 28th at here, at the Musso Chamber.
And we'll make sure that's accurate on the online calendar.
Good.
Alright, get ready, we're going into budget season, so we'll be moving there quickly.
Okay.
Alright, so, all's in favor, just come out by saying aye.
Aye.
Careful, it's affirmative, we're adjourned, thank you.